March 5th, 2007. This evening, City Council is first going to meet in a committee meeting for the financing personnel and then at 7:30 we will reconvene for a regular session of City Council. Committee Chair Jim Sands.
Mr. President, we have four items on our agenda. The first one is titled "The Clean Ohio Fund." The detail about this is there's some land that adjoins Sells Park, the city's park at the end of Avon Place, that we have thought would be beneficial to us, to the city, to add to the parkland. John Nauss, who has worked on several other land purchase projects for the city, has made arrangements with the Clean Ohio Fund for us to receive some funding. There is a local city match to purchase this land. And Mayor, do you have some details about the Masters tract, how large it is, et cetera? I don't have that in front of me.
Sure. It's just a little under seventeen acres. It's two, and Faceoff Park is to the left. It would include that cave area, which everybody kind of assumes is in it. This was approved last year by council to apply for the grant funds. It was a competitive grant situation. The total cost, the purchase, closing costs, and an erection fence along the border with the Masters property. Total cost of all that would be ninety-four thousand dollars. Of that, seventy thousand five hundred comes from the Clean Ohio Fund, seventy-five percent. We would, once this is approved by council, then we would actually, I've already contacted the owners and their, through their attorney, we'd probably close on it in late April and then be able to start the construction of the fence this summer. Most of this fence construction cost is in materials because John is very good at lining up volunteer labor and help out with those things. So he believes that ninety-four is the highest cash value by having some in-kind labor on it.
Again, we've talked about this several times. This is, this is an area that many people visiting the park visit anyway, assuming that it is part of the park and it is in everybody's best interest that we make it part of the park. And we're very happy that the Masters family has agreed to this. Are there any questions from committee or council members?
Another question, just a comment. I think when I was a sophomore in college, I used to camp there, back then thinking it was part of the park. And the Masters, again, have had to put up with, for many, many years, people leaving beer bottles and many things there that they really didn't want to have to endure. And I'm really pleased.
Nor do we want that in our park, period.
Yeah. But I know that that's been a lot of frustration for them and I am really pleased again, as you said, that they are willing to do this.
Paul? So this will be on tonight's agenda and suspend it?
I'm going to ask that we suspend the rule so that this can happen as quickly as possible.
Okay.
I just think if the seventy thousand, Clean Ohio, is a nice high percentage, then that's an excellent comparative situation.
And again, as the mayor mentioned, that's a competitive grant. We have received monies from this fund before and I think it is our record in adding to the park system that has enabled us to receive this. Okay. Any other comments on this? Okay. We also have a, an ordinance asking us to approve, to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Department of Development of the State of Ohio for a revolving loan fund. These would be funds that would be earned by the city of Athens through the CHIP program, Community Housing Improvement, Community Housing Improvement Program, which is administered by Tri-County. Tri-County. And there is no money in this fund. We have no funds that are, at the moment, due to us. This is an agreement with the State of Ohio, which runs for two years. It must be in effect for us to receive any funds that, that would be generated.
This is a renewal.
And, I'm sorry, this is a program that has been in effect for quite a while. This is a renewal of that. Do we need to suspend on this? I didn't, there's no emergency there. Okay, thank you. We also have, an ordinance that comes from the Auditor's Office, practically an annual ordinance, it's the Interfund Transfer Ordinance. Funds transferred within the budget from one fund to another. Money appropriated from one fund to the other must come through City Council. And at this moment, the Auditor's Office is asking us to approve two of those transfers. One of them is from the Parking Garage Fund into the Parking Garage Debt Fund, a hundred sixty-six thousand dollars, a hundred sixty-six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. The other is from the TIF Fund, the East State TIF Fund, into the East State Debt Fund to pay, that's what we're using that TIF for at this moment, is to pay the debt on construction of East State Street, three hundred thousand dollars. These are appropriations, moving money that need to happen quickly, so we will be asking for suspension.
Okay.
Just a clarification. So this is basically incomes that is put against the debt.
Yes, ma'am.
Excellent.
Income from the parking garage, income in front of the debt.
Good.
Do you happen to know what the balances will be?
I do not know.
Or are.
The Parking Garage debt is currently three hundred and fifty thousand. This would pay off a hundred and fifty thousand of that.
Wow.
Now that is a June payment. Both of these are June, Jim, so you don't need to suspend. We can run this correct. We're on time on this one.
Okay.
Yeah. And then the TIF payment is, it's a two million dollar grant, or two million dollar loan that's still outstanding. We'll pay down interest and principal up to three hundred thousand. The TIF Fund is one that, it's just like the FEMA Fund. State law sets it up, you have to put it in there, then you have to transfer it out to where you actually spend, never really spend any money in the TIF Fund.
So the amount that we will owe for the parking garage will be under two hundred thousand?
Two hundred thousand.
Yay.
Getting closer.
Paul? It looks like it's still going to need repairs, so. I mean, I was looking at the, I was watching a drainpipe not do its thing sometime last week.
The goal was to get it paid off before it needed repair.
We spend more money.
Paul, Jake, did you have? No? Okay. So we will not, we will read this for the first time, but we will not be suspending. I'm sorry. However, on our fourth item on the agenda, some prior year expenses, I think we do need to suspend. These are some expenses which we owe from 2006. As most of you know, our city vehicles purchase their gasoline through the university because we get a much better deal, the more bulk you can purchase. So part of this amount is due to the university, twenty-two thousand six hundred and fifty-five dollars for gasoline purchases from November to December, I believe. And then there's a forty-four thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars, which is due to the Leyd Law Transportation Company, the company that used to administer our bus system. This is a very long ordinance. It lists all of the funds from which money is appropriated and then it lists farther down, it, I'm sorry, yeah, money that's appropriated from different funds. And then in the second section, it's all the money that is expended from each of those funds to pay these bills. Some of it is a hundred and twenty dollars, some of it is five thousand dollars from different funds. All that's listed here. Paul?
So this is broken down by vehicle? Is that what you're saying?
By, not by vehicles, but by departments that have vehicles.
Okay. Also, Rick, I saw an email coming out through the university, something about them changing their billing system. Does that affect us too?
Yes, it does.
Okay. So is that something more efficient or is that something that will keep us on our toes more?
That's debatable. The university seems to think that it will be more efficient. We do already keep track of fuel costs by vehicle. They've just changed their accounting method. They say it's for the better. We'll see.
It doesn't affect me where I am in the university, but I was just looking at that and saying it's something that would affect us possibly.
Yes.
Can I understand you say that all of these, listening here, are basically fuel costs? It's all those?
Well, within Section 1, most of those annotations are from departments that pay fuel costs. There is also forty-four thousand, almost forty-five thousand, to pay our transportation system administrator, Leyd Law. And that money is coming, I'm guessing, from the transportation fund auditor?
Yes.
Is that in Section 1 as it says fifty thousand?
Fifty thousand two hundred and twenty-nine. They also owe some gas.
Okay. So gas plus contract.
Yeah. They're the only ones who are paying that.
I would, I would point out on the Leyd Law Transportation bill, that is covered in part by grant funds, probably at least seventy, seventy-five percent of it. The others come from Fairbox revenue and other items, there's very little actual spending money in that. We run the bus system right now for, I think it's under, around twenty thousand dollars a year of actual city funds. The rest of it is all grants and Fairbox revenue and other items.
Thank you. Carol?
Just a comment about this. This fuel cost has almost always lagged behind by a couple of months and so this is a customary ordinance at this time of year.
Yes.
I'm sorry, the mayor confused me now. If we run it for twenty, then why are we paying the forty-four?
Well, we have to pay the full, and I'm talking cash of city funds. We get about two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollar grant through the Department of Transportation.
So this is a pass-through.
Then we have some contracts, like with University Courtyard, where we bill them thirty-seven thousand dollars a quarter for, so when we pay, Leyd Law, we're paying them forty-some dollars per hour that they run the bus. It's all inclusive of the expenses they have.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Not to blindside you with this, but I've been noticing some of the new buses in town, say Rocky Mountain National Park and such things, it's had.
Sure.
So that's the new company with buses they use elsewhere?
Well, what we found is we were adding a bus line. We don't have as good of buses as we want to do it. In fact, some of them are pretty old. Carol, your Transportation Committee could get into probably much more depth than I can on it. So we, in essence, leased additional bus or two from our supplier, just like when we were under Leyd Law and we got the University Courtyard buses, we purchased those from North Carolina. And they were airport buses. So they, that's their, we just haven't, since we're only leasing it and haven't made a commitment to purchase, we've left the lettering alone because it's just more expensive. It gets noticed.
Gets attention.
It is a backup bus and so it won't be on the road all the time, but it was my understanding that they were going to repaint it even if we don't purchase it. So it's kind of unique. I like it.
Paul?
Well, I was just going to say, and Carol, you know this, that one of my teams is working on transportation and they may have some suggestions for what to paint on the side of it. Would you like to hear one first?
Any other comments? Finally, we have a miscellaneous. Tonight's miscellaneous is a group of people headed by Amanda Estock to give us some information about a proposal for Student Senate Sponsored Business Fair. I'm sorry.
Could I jump in with one miscellaneous, the paint program?
I'm sorry, Paul, I knew that was coming and I skipped right over.
Sorry, sorry, folks. We were talking about trying to add some money to the housing paint program. I got an email from Melissa some time back. We talked maybe about ten, fifteen thousand, fifteen?
Right. I'd put some money into the budget, but usually I've gone to council, make sure they still want to continue the program.
I think it's a good idea.
Assume they do.
Yes.
And with the thought you and I had talked about earlier was that we wanted to put some money also toward, out of that two-fifty fund, toward the West State Street Cemetery. And so we need to discuss probably both of those to see how much money do we want to allocate to each, because there's some proposals to replace some plaques, but also maybe do some restoration to the opening, kind of like arch.
The gateway there.
And some of the staff is recommending that we probably just rebuild it because that was an arch from twenties, I believe. And it's pretty, it probably costs about the same to replace it as it would to restore.
Okay. Shall we hold off on actually putting ordinance or do you have a price?
No, I think if the committee wants, you know, I get a general, I can start the paint program because that's an application we go through and everything and we need just to announce it to the public and having it discussed at council is a good way to do that too.
Okay.
But that would give, we had one or two phone calls on it that would give Melissa the go-ahead to be able to call those people and say, yep, we are going to have one and I'm sending you an application to fill out, et cetera. So but you probably need, you probably need to look at the fund balance there and say, how much do we want to allocate toward each?
And you said that was two-fifty?
Yeah. Athens Enhancement Fund is where we've been taking that before, which really is the Athens Station Lease Payments that comes into us and then we pay the school war taxes out of that and then usually try to do something to improve the city out of balance.
Okay. And you were talking about getting a price for the gate?
Yes.
Okay.
And they'd have to look in my file, I think they did, to give me, get me an estimate. I'll look for that, Paul.
Okay, no problem. Okay, sorry to jump in.
That's okay.
Thank you for doing that. Now, Amanda Estock in team.
My name's Amanda Estack.
Amanda Estock in team, I'm sorry.
I'm here with Robert and Emily and we're representing Student Council. We're here to present to you a proposal for an idea for the 2007 Athens City Business Fair that we'd like to see occur, happening during the fall of the next academic year. So basically, what we're here to propose to you is, I don't know if you guys have recently read an article that was written in a local newspaper about some of the uptown businesses, expressing that they've been losing some business over, you know, specifically the new Baker Center opening up, but also on the student end of it. You know, I challenged a few students to name at least twenty-five businesses that they know of that aren't bars that are located in the area and I'd get to find one student who could do that. So basically, what we need to do is increase the awareness of the existence of these businesses among our student body. And how would we do that? Well, the idea we came up with was a business fair. This is going to run much like the organization fair we currently have for university students and we thought this would be the best bet because the organization fair that we currently have is very successful. It's one of the ways that a lot of our students, one, the only way some of our students get information about the organizations on campus, otherwise they wouldn't know about them. So I thought if we ran an organ, a fair much like our organization fair that we have on campus, we might have the same success. And it works both ways. You scratch your back, you scratch ours. So I feel like this fair would really invest a lot into the city as well as the personal gain of the student. So the proposed date for the event, we were thinking Saturday, September 8th would be best. It is the weekend after the first week of classes, so all the students would be on campus. And it's after Labor Day, so you wouldn't have to worry about any major holiday falling on that Saturday. And that's the idea for the time, we'd like a timeframe of maybe four hours. It's flexible, you know, we were just suggesting one, so if you had any better ideas, you know, we're, we're open to them. The location, the first option for location, we thought would be, number one, the parking garage, we thought would be a great, great place, the first level, because we wouldn't have to worry about a rainout date. It would be an enclosed area. Also, if businesses, like food businesses, wanted to use, needed electricity, because if they wanted to bring, you know, sample, sample some of their food, they can do that. They have the option to do that. And we like the idea of having it uptown in the parking garage because it's more of a city, it's more of a location off-campus, so that we're bringing the students off-campus into the city. And it's kind of just the whole irony behind it, so. The other option we have is South Court Street. And this location is ideal because it's right by Baker Center and as you know, the new Baker Center has a lot, is a high-traffic area for students right now, so we have a lot of students passing through there. We think that this way, you know, any student who wasn't aware of the business fair through the ridiculous advertising we're going to do, we feel that, you know, they're going to run into it regardless in, if we have it on South Court Street. And then our third option is President Street. And here's just a map of basically, like where we cut off the locations at. So it'd be right outside of Baker, up to President Street, actually, that we highlighted, the wrong street in green. So since this is inaccurate, or, of course, the parking garage. The perspective cost, of course, it's always a big, big deal. Obviously, tables, we would have to rent and I thought that, you know, it, we kind of ballparked a figure of two hundred businesses participating. We want to overshoot, of course, because we don't want any big surprises when we plan this. So at five-fifty each, you know, that'd be around a thousand dollars, but we feel, we figure we could cut that cost by charging each individual business their prices running the table, because this would also kind of ensure commitment on their part, so I don't have businesses telling me that they'll attend but then not show up. This way, it's kind of like a attendance fee. Also, the, so, and Student Senate would be picking up the price of advertising, like paper flyers and stuff like that. We would make sure that the word gets out to the students and we would pick up any cost that that would have. And then also the, if we have it in the parking garage or on the street, obviously, we'd need the parking spaces for those four hours. So with the help of Ray Heslett, he's ballparked that figure at five dollars per each space for the day and that would be two thousand dollars, so. And there goes my guy. What are the odds? But you know what? That's okay, because we can just talk through the rest of it. The second thing we did, well, Emily's just going to talk about the work that we've done so far.
Overwind a break, Robert and I, we are interns for the City and County Commission that's putting this on. Robert and I contacted almost two hundred businesses. We went through the Athens area Commerce, Chamber of Commerce book, as well as the phone book, and picked out businesses to call that would be beneficial to students around the area. And we asked them, we were trying to gauge interests in, in our events. And out of those almost two hundred businesses, we recorded a total between ninety and a hundred very interested members, as well as a number of businesses that we would need to send information to corporate offices, so they would know if they were able to participate or not. So we're looking at a pretty good attendance rate so far and we're very, very excited about it.
And then we also passed, unanimously passed a Senate resolution.
Yeah. Student Senate passed a resolution and the purpose really was to show that the student body is behind this move to have a business fair. I've personally gone around and asked friends and just acquaintances and everybody believes in this fair and they really think that it's a good way to strengthen the bond between the university and the surrounding community.
Okay. Let me see, if anything else that, so yeah, basically, you know, this would be a student-run event, but we're looking for your permission to use the location. We're also looking for some financial assistance to close, use those parking spots, because I know it will cost money for the day. So with the first, if, this being the first year of having the event, we were thinking that maybe we could, you could help us out by allowing us to use those parking spaces with, free of cost for us. And if this really is a successful event, we can maybe look at having it, you know, again in the future and then some way we'll incorporate that cost onto either maybe the student or for an admission fee, or we'll charge the business for participating, because they may see this as something worthwhile and they'll pay, you know, more than five-fifty to come. And I think five-fifty right now is very cheap advertising to a audience of twenty thousand students, so you never know, maybe they would be willing to pay more. So do you have any questions?
Any other questions? You want to go first?
Well, I can say, I think it's a fabulous idea and I commend you for doing all that work to put it together.
Thank you.
And so it's a question of trying to figure out, you know, how.
Paul?
So when you talk about businesses, what kind of range of business are you talking about? Mostly food, mostly what?
We've contacted both food, business, and retail. So we have three different areas that we're working in. We've also contacted businesses that aren't on Court Street. We kind of actually put more of our efforts into those that are located, you know, in the surrounding area. We didn't go as far, you know, we didn't scour Athens County, more just Athens City, because, you know, most of these students are, you know, restricted to walking distance, so.
I know Carol has fronted various crafts and businesses.
Yes, my brain is just right on that. That was my question. I certainly, we have occasional art markets in Athens and actually I need for that to be on the agenda for next week to talk a little bit about this year's market. But I certainly can see where maybe the local artisans would like to have their market at that time and therefore there'd be a little buy-in from them and they'd pick up part of that.
I think the collaboration would be great.
Cost. And I wondered if you had asked the businesses at all if they, what they felt about location?
We, when we did call, we had a nu, a number of questions that we asked them. What day would they prefer, a Monday, a Sunday, a Saturday? Most of them said Saturday was the best day. We also asked them, let me see, you have the?
How many hours they would be willing to commit.
Yeah, how many hours they'd be willing to commit, like a three-hour period, a four-hour period, all the way up to a five-hour period. And then also, we did ask them which location they'd prefer, but most of the phone calls we got through, either the manager was very busy and we didn't want to take up much of their time. So the one question that we were only able to get through was, this is what it is, are you interested? Thank you for your time. And then, you know, so we didn't want to really bother anybody, make them mad, irritate them, so, because we will be contacting them again.
There was a couple of businesses, though, that we did contact that were very, very interested and very excited about the opportunity. And so they did start asking questions about where and that sort of thing. I got mixed responses when I was contacting my, my set of businesses. They did like the parking garage idea, but they did like a street idea as well, so it would be more open for students to see what's going on and like, keep their interest, so.
Just a couple of things about this. My understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, that this really began, this thinking began last year when, when we talked about having the opening weekend, remember the street closing that we were not sure we were comfortable with? And at that point, the discussion was, well, the students don't know the local businesses and, and so that was partly what it grew out of. And the other thing is the, the involvement fair or organization fair, which is just an excellent event. So as far as I'm concerned, I think it's a wonderful event and the only of the three locations that I would personally have a problem with is the President Street. It seems that that would cause a traffic problem, but the other two locations would, were quite nice.
Thank you.
Jim? I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I just wondered when the welcome picnics happen and if there's some way to combine the welcome picnic that council sponsors with the the welcome picnic that Council sponsors with this. Um, we've been doing this annually for the last couple years, to have some free food and a cookout, and, you know, if, the neighborhood associations are trying to have them in each neighborhood to actually help residents and new tenants in the neighborhood meet each other, but then, we've been sponsoring one that we've had down by McCracken Field. So, I, I'd like to kick around that idea a little bit, whether there'd be a way to combine it, instead of doing two separate things that we're using, you know, city-
That's an awesome idea. Anywhere food is, I'm sure students will go, so. That's great.
Oh, Jinko?
Yeah, and I guess that's part of my question. So, these vendors, um, aside from food vendors, I mean, I guess they would need a permit to sell or something?
Yeah, we would have, I'm, I'm sure that there would be some-
So, they might be selling food. Right, I was thinking, like, if they're not a food vendor, you know, let's say it's a little shop or something, are you thinking that they would be selling things, or are they just giving coupons, or?
We suggested coupon, um, especially coupons that would only be effective during their slow season, like, around Chris- you know, Christmas time. Like, we have, you know, I think that it'd be great if they only gave, you know, certain valid dates to use the coupon, so it's not like an all, all the time, so they're not bombarded, you know, within the beginning of the, you know, beginning of the academic year, so.
10,000 people coming in with it.
When we make our contacts, again, letting people know that if this actually does happen, uh, we will also be giving suggestions that, um, as students, we think that would be beneficial to the business, so.
Okay. We do need to move on. Thank you, thank you all for your presentation. It seems as though the consensus of Council is, it's a great idea, go ahead. We obviously need to work out the details, so, as President Byas suggests, we probably need to put this on agenda of a, of another committee meeting where we can discuss exactly what we need to do.
Okay.
So, um, we'll have Councilmember Flowers set that up as soon as possible.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Are we going right in?
And we'll go straight on into our regular session of City Council, so let's call it order, the regular session, Monday, March 5th, 2007. We do have a forum with six of seven members present. Uh, next item on our agenda is disposition of minutes. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes from the regular session, January 16th, special session, January 22nd, regular session, February 5th, special session, February 12th, and regular session, February 19th?
I move to accept the minutes of, uh, those sessions.
Okay.
Further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the minutes have been accepted. Under communications, uh, there are several things. I'd first like to announce, uh, two different public hearings that will be happening. One, uh, public hearing, Athens City Council, will hold a public hearing, 7:00 PM, Monday, March 19th, oh seven, in Council chambers, this room. This hearing is to consider a recommendation by the Planning Commission to amend Athens City Code, Section 2303.13T6, as an exemption to the current signage regulations, to read as follows, murals, painted wall murals or other similar artwork on public property, if recommended by the Municipal Arts Commission and approved by City Council. The other public hearing will be the same date, Monday, March 19th, this at 7:15 PM, in these very chambers. This is to consider a recommendation by the Planning Commission to amend Athens City Code, Section 2311, Table A, schedule of bulk controls, to change the current height limitation of 75 feet, six stories, to 50 feet, four stories, in a B2B zone. Again, that's 7:15, Monday, March 19th. Uh, Member Wild?
I move the accepted financial reports from the auditor for the months of December and January.
Second.
Motion in the second to accept the auditor's financial reports for December and January. Further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the reports have been accepted. Reports in communication from other elected officials. Law Director Hunter.
Uh, no reports, Mr. President.
Mayor Abel.
Thank you, Mr. President. As some of you on the south side of town may, may have noticed, Mulligan Road was opened about 12:30 Friday afternoon. Uh, we used to have a gravel base down there, because it's a pretty big area, and it'd be very expensive to put down cold mix, so we're gonna wait to, to the hot mix plants open, but we will monitor that, especially, probably on a daily basis right now, uh, to see how the gravel and everything is. Fortunately, one of our crew lives up on Longview, so, uh, just change the route to work, and we'll be all right. In addition to that, uh, what we are going to do is, uh, with the Street Department, put in a couple of pins for monitoring purposes, so that we can see how well that has been contained. And we would do, pro- at the beginning, probably a weekly check, and then it'll go to a monthly, to see if any more slippage is occurring, or if this particular, uh, methodology worked well for us. Andy seems pretty confident that it will, but the ground has its own way of thinking about things from time to time. Also, in the Street Department, uh, they've, they've, uh, gone through quite a bit of salt and everything. We've committed everything, I think all 50-some thousand dollars that we've had on the encumbrances. Uh, we're not out, we've got three-fourths of a bin there, and we still have some we can order, but it looks like we'll be on budget, or just slightly below, unless the weather changes from a typical March. Uh, also, with the, uh, getting rid of the snow, it also magically appears more trash. Code Office started out Monday morning, uh, with, uh, trying to identify some areas, and we did have some help from the public with some things over the course of the week that helped there. Overall, um, we went to 105, uh, different addresses. 69 of those times, we were, somebody was home, and we were able to wish, issue a verbal warning and tell them to pick it up. Uh, 36 received written warnings, no one was home, in other words, but also saying, if it wasn't cleaned up by such and such a time, they would be back to cite them. Overall, 93 of those 105 complied, so we only issued 12 tickets. Uh, but there were a number of times that the, uh, street was a little messy, so the code officers had to do a little pickup themselves. Uh, and, uh, but, we are not able to do this all the time, because, of course, housing inspections are a priority. But I do think that, especially when we hit this early on, as the weather changes and people start to notice, and that was really the idea why we started out that way Monday morning on it. Uh, but the proof will be more of how we can continue this, and of course, with the, I mean, we're through with the litter, or, with the interview stage of the litter control officer, and we're doing the background checks now, uh, but that person will have to receive some training. And, uh, yeah, as I've told the Code Office, just because we have this person doesn't mean you don't do that task anymore. It's more than one person can do, because at times, when I send all five out, they can't keep up with it. Uh, this depends upon, but we will continue to do that, because part of it is the way we've structured the new position, is they will work over the weekends. And so, that means there's two weekdays, that there's not that person on duty, i.e. the Code Office is still gonna have to have that as one of their items to do, and each officer has been assigned a section of town, so that, uh, we can monitor how well they're doing. That's it.
Last two?
Um-
Member Wild?
Two questions. Um, I, there was some discussion of, uh, there's a litter, report litter, uh, link on your website, the city website, where does that go to exactly?
We don't know.
That's right.
It didn't come to the Code Office. We know that, and, but, uh, Ron's on vacation this week, so when we asked Scott the question, he said he didn't know. And when Ron comes back, we're gonna find out where that goes. We hope.
Okay. The other question is, uh, the water breaks. What's the status of the water line breaks? We've had a series of them, I noted it, there was a discussion-
I think we had five today.
Five today?
Uh, yes.
I'm gonna boil yours, just have a, uh-
No, because we couldn't get all of them repaired. Some of them were, I think, Madison, the salt trucks were ready to go to correct that. We also have some route deviations, but, uh, it's been a particularly tough, uh, period of time here, and, and even, even the sewer crew was out three times this weekend on sewer clogs. And when we ask, uh, "Is this weather-related?", and he said, they basically just said, "No, it's just the twist of fate when you're already down from all of the water line breaks and everything else." Uh, it's probably one of the worst months I can remember in the city. It's, it's been tough. We've, we've frozen up water meters, well, we've done it all.
Member Sands?
I just, I want to say thank you to, um, the administration, and particularly the Code Office, for, for following up on this, uh, on Monday, and I know that neighborhoods appreciate it, and, and hope that we can work it out as often as possible. As you say, in this, this changing weather, it becomes more evident.
Right. It's the most noticeable time for litter in the year, because the snow gets removed, the trees are not out, the flowers and trevor are not, that camouflages some of this, you know, and it's, and it's windy. And it, things can get blown all over the place.
Member Wild?
And if thanks goes out, it's also to the Water Department for having to fix all those things, too.
Yes.
They've been busy. I, I've been looking at the reports, I tell you that once.
Other comments for Mayor? Member Bain?
Oh, Mayor Abel, I was wondering about Madison Hill and the ice every morning, is that part of the-
Yeah, that's where one of the breaks is, is not one of those that's gushing out.
It's worse.
So that-
Than it lately.
We're doing, well, it just, it hasn't reached the priority level, and for, it was on, and it was scheduled. Same thing with Short Street, was scheduled to be done today, but then Walker Street blew. If you noticed that new sidewalk down on West Union, we did, there was a nice break under part of that. If you want to see a nice hole in new concrete, you can, you point it out, and you go through, and at least it was the sidewalk instead of the street.
I always see Jim icing his driveway, well, you can just go off that hill. Uh, de-icing it, go up the hill, throw the salt up the hill. But, and then the other thing is, you know, the other thing the Code Office could do, and I, we, it would be great if they could make sure the landlords give their tenants a covered 30-gallon garbage truck, because some of that stuff comes from inappropriate storage, don't you think?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. I've made that point before.
Member Bishop?
Okay, I just want to go back, because we all laughed about the fact that the website didn't work. I was gonna say, I mean, in a way, though, I think it, it's not really a laughing matter, and that we probably ought to pay attention to having accurate information and links that lead somewhere. I mean, you know, if we didn't fix the water pipe, we wouldn't really laugh, so I just want to raise that, but I think we ought to take communication seriously.
We do, it's just-
Well, we are, I think one of the things that, and you and I have talked about this, Bojinko, is trying to get some programming available with other departments, so they can change their own website, and some training for it. Because right now, with the seven different, I guess it's eight different departments that report in, for one person working part-time at it, it's tough to keep up.
Well, yeah, and I think that's, that's something to really look at.
And that one person has been on vacation this past week, and, uh, I think we've all seen just what all happens when we depend on one.
Yeah, not having backup, I think is a serious issue.
Other comments? Ordinances for third reading, oh, I'm sorry, uh, to the auditor, Kathy H.
I hardly ever talk in tonight, I was going to, you almost missed me.
And I, well, that's why I quit asking, you know, I can only ask so many times, I go rejecting-
You never know, I just thought I'd surprise you tonight. I just had two quick things I wanted to bring up, as far as, um, income tax revenue, um, I guess one of the reasons I didn't bring it up in January is because it was down, but, um, that was mainly due to a, a couple late payments that came in, like, February 1st, and so, at, at this point in the year, it's up, uh, 2.1%, which amounts to about $30,000. And, um, I guess it was two weeks ago or so that, um, Paul asked about carryover. I don't know, did you ask about general fund, or just total carryover balance for this year?
Can you give us both?
I can.
Okay.
Um, the carryover balance for this year, for the general fund, is 1,333,000. That's up about 35,000 from 2006. Our grand total all funds, as we turn into the County Budget Commission, is, um, 7,992,500, and that's, uh, up about 732,000 from 2006.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I don't know, I've got to tell them. Okay, any other questions?
Comments, questions for the auditor? Ordinance 507, an ordinance authorizing a development agreement with Beaumont Green LLC. Member Phillips?
Mr. President, I move adoption of 00507.
Second.
Um, this authorizes the development agreement for Beaumont Green, which is a senior housing project out on the east side of Athens. We've heard from the developer a couple times, um, as Member Bain pointed out, early on in this process, this furthers one of the goals in our comprehensive plan about providing this type of housing, and I think we're all glad to see this moving forward.
Other comments? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 0507?
Aye.
Those opposed, the ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 1707, an ordinance allowing expansion of the Athens City Water System, to include emergency service to the Tupper's Plains Chester Water District. Member Bain?
Mr. President, I move adoption of 01707.
Second.
01707 is a companion to 0507. Um, what it does is allows the, um, city administration, the service director is designated to sell water to, um, the Tupper's Plains Chester Water District when we have surplus water, when there is an emergency. So, um, this is part of, um, the, the securing of the, um, release of WODA from being within the service area of Tupper's Plain and Chester Water District, and that's why we're doing this.
Further discussion. Member Wild?
And this has us have control of the TAP and all the other technical processes that control it.
And the ordinance states just exactly what, um, Nikkar said would be happening, so.
Other comments? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 1707?
Aye.
Opposed, the ordinance has been adopted. Ordinances for second reading, ordinance 1307, an ordinance accepting the plat of the Herald Square subdivision. Ordinance 1807, an ordinance amending Athens City Code, excuse me, member Bain?
Did you finish reading it, before you were so rudely interrupted?
Uh, we can, uh, I didn't get too far.
Go ahead and read, go ahead and finish reading it.
Oh, 18?
Yeah.
An ordinance amending Athens City Code, Title VII, Traffic Code, Section 7, .09, .99. Now, member Bain, I thought you wanted to comment on the previous ordinance, okay?
No, Mr. President, I'd like to move to amend, um, the ordinance 01807, two ways places. Number one, um, at the recommendations of people who collect the tickets, we're going to expand the window for payment of an un, of, um, of the fee from 48 hours to five business days.
Second.
That's, and that's one part, the second part, thanks for, Paul, 70999, um, we're also going to change motorcycle parking, and that's the, those are the two amendments, and I believe Debbie sent you copies of those two, and so, um, those are the two that I'm amending.
Further comments on the amendment only?
I think he seconded it.
He did, yes. I was waiting.
Okay.
No further comments?
Happy to see five days.
Okay, member Wild?
Um, I think five days is appropriate, I've gotten some feedback from people on the street, they think it's appropriate.
Member Sands?
No.
Okay.
I was leading you.
Carol?
Two things. Uh, one, I, I really appreciate Amy going to the police department with this, and, and getting, uh, some input there. Um, and, uh, okay, what was my second? Um, oh, Nancy, what exactly, I don't have this in front of me. What exactly is the motorcycle change?
Um, for motorcycles, um, the same fine as a car.
Okay.
Ten.
So, it just do it, be inclusive.
Increases it, yeah, and, where's it, oh, we're still talking about the amendment.
Yeah, only.
Right, okay.
Uh, yes, I, I do have a question.
You had a chance, yes, member Sands?
I just want to make sure that every place it says 72 hours, we're changing to, to five business days. Is that, am I hearing that correctly?
Yes, that's, yeah, did you?
Yes, that's what I thought, but I just wasn't sure. Thank you.
Okay, I just want to, you weren't reading your email again, right?
Mayor?
What's that?
Motion in the second to amend ordinance 1807 as stated. All those in favor of the- All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Those opposed, the ordinance has been amended and read for the first time.
Yeah, and I would like to clarify one thing that Carol said about Amy going to the police department. Actually, I didn't know we had to because the actual recommendations to do this came from the police department. So I don't know why. But I'm glad. The second time around is even better.
Okay. I understand that there are people in the audience tonight that wishes to speak to this ordinance.
There you go.
If there is anyone that would like to speak to the ordinance, please come forward to the podium. No one?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. The other thing that I would ask is that council rules provide that you state your name, your address, and we ask that you leave, let me comment for three minutes.
Three minutes?
Three minutes.
Okay.
And we are a little flexible with that, so.
Okay. My name is Ralph Skarmack. I'm a business owner at 42 North Court Street. We've been conducting business there for about four years. Is that enough for stating? Okay. I've also been a citizen here for about 37 years. Parking has always been an issue in this town. We get a lot of different people in our store from all around, and one of the things that they always comment on is the parking. Tends to be ambiguous as, even though it's on the post, it states what it is, but I think some of the confusion is where the loading zones are, exactly what that is. Because some say loading and then taxi. So a lot of those places I see don't get utilized in the evenings. But aside from all that, raising the fine from a $5 to a $10, I find to be excessive, particularly with the people that work up here. It's one thing, and I don't think maybe any of you would ever understand, but if you're dealing with somebody, you can't really just say, hey, excuse me, I got to go move my car, or I got to go feed my meter. Now, sometimes the meter maids or the enforcement, they're lax on it. I mean, in the sense that they'll say, okay, put a quarter in, go about your business. Or, you know, they'll have some leniency, some there. But it depends on who you're dealing with and what kind of mood they're in. But I just really think it furthers a black mark on the city to rake, put that increase on the parking. People aren't going to want to come down and shop. They get a $10 ticket, they're going to say, forget it. That's the last time I'm going there. And I hear it all the time. I think there's some issues with the parking and the loading zones and how they're divided up within the city that need to be addressed. That would ease some of the parking issues. In fact, there's three spots around our store that never get used because the guys don't want to haul their stuff uphill, you know? So these three spots sit there all day long. Well, those three spots could actually be turning over and allowing people to come in and park. There's 11 spots, loading zones, in that one area. So it makes it very difficult down there. I try not to park on the street. If I do, I try to be as quick as possible. I'm not there all day. I pay for my own parking. I have a lot uptown, but there are times where I have to park on the street. And to get a $10 ticket, I'd say I'd probably get one maybe every two weeks, once a month, something like that. But I pay them. I pay them on time, and I write by check as well. But anyway, I mean, maybe there's some other things that you guys could consider, like such as the trash. The state of Ohio has a litter ordinance of $500 for littering. How many thousands of cigarette butts are laying on that ground out there? There's meter maids are sitting there giving a ticket to a car. Why can't they just say, here you go, here's a $500 ticket? That would pay for your law enforcement real quick. So I think you should really consider not to raise the parking. There might be other means that you could go buy that and find it equally as advantageous to the city. So, anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Skarmack. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this? Yes?
My name's Greg Broadhurst. I live at 14 Granville Avenue in Athens. I just wanted to give my encouragement and appreciation for Mr. Skarmack coming up here to speak. You know, we have got a lot of things that are kind of flapping in the wind around here. And I don't think that raising the parking fees is going to make that much difference. I mean, you wonder where the revenues went from all the development around here, for instance. I understood that the reason for raising the fees was to assist in the hiring of maybe another police officer. This is what I heard originally. Correct me if I'm incorrect.
Two.
Two. Well, you look over, how long has it been, you know? And as the city has grown, you ask yourself, well, parking fees? I mean, look at all this other stuff that's been going on. Where's the money? You know, you have to ask yourself, where's the money? And why haven't revenues been dedicated to fire and safety and other things of, you know, high priority? I mean, I have to ask myself that question. So it's just like, you know, it's a, it's a cat's lick. It's a postage stamp solution in a way. That's just the one, I just had to express that myself. Because I actually agree with Mr. Skarmack. Because if you're trying to, if you're trying to make an attractive downtown, a place where people want to come and shop and co-mingle and enjoy, which also lends to, it's being kept up. I mean, as far as cleanliness, I mean, look at this city. You know, it, it, this just, this doesn't fly. I mean, the $10? I mean, I understand what the effort is, but, you know, there's, there's got to be something else here that's got to be remedied. And, you know, I also noticed, too, the fact that the parking is, in the parking spaces that are allocated around town for whatever reasons, they're all like seemingly helter-skelter. And some people, including cab companies, probably have more of their share than, let's say, businesses and that sort of thing. And I'm not the person in charge of doing that, but I think it needs looked at, too. I just want to add that to the, to my observations. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Chris Demel. I'm the owner of Themes. This is my third location. I just moved to Code Street. And I agree with Ralph and the other gentlemen. I don't think we should raise the parking fee from $5 to $10. I have a park, I pay for a parking lot at the Athens Historical Society, but from time to time, I do have to park with an employee so that I could come into the store. And I have paid so many parking tickets. And raising that from 5 to 10 would hurt me a lot, but I'm not talking about myself. I'm talking about the customers who come to our store. I moved to Code Street, and we have started a small group called Hidden Treasures to attract more people come and shop uptown Athens so that it will not be just a place for bars. We want to have more retail establishments and to make the downtown more attractive. And I think if you raise the parking fee from 5 to 10, fewer customers would want to come there. As it is, people complain when we ask them, you know, why do we see you once a year, only at Christmas time? They tell us that parking is a problem. And now if you raise the parking fee from 5 to 10, a customer who comes to Ralph's store would not want to come to my store or Gloria's store because they have to run and feed the parking meter. So I hope that you could find some other way to get the revenue to play for the expenses you, you want to, for the police officers or whoever you need the money for, and not raise the parking fee from 5 to $10. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Please.
My name is Gloria Duncan. I'm the owner of Court Street Collection on 64 North Court Street. I agree with Ralph and Chris and Greg. I hear mostly from my customers that, I mean, they spend a great deal of their time looking out the window to see if the parking meter maid is anywhere nearby, but I think it would definitely affect business in uptown Athens. And I agree with Chris in that we're trying to, as a group, get more people to come into Athens. And I think raising the fine will definitely hinder that initiative, so I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Thank you very much for your input. Ordinance 1907, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title V Public Utilities, Chapter 5.02, Garbage and Rubbish, Section 5.02.08, Terms of License. Ordinance 2007, an ordinance authorizing the service safety director to advertise and accept bids where necessary and enter into contracts for design and construction of skate park lighting. Ordinance 2107, an ordinance closing a portion of Court Street from Union Street to State Street on Saturday, May 19, 2007, from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. for the International Street Fair. On to ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 2207, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, Clean Ohio Fund for purchase of the Strouds Ridge Phase 6 Masters Track and declaring an emergency. Member Sands?
Mr. President, I move that we consider ordinance 02207 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
This is a purchase that utilizes some state funds, and we need to move as quickly as possible to make sure that we comply with the timeframe.
Motion and second to consider ordinance 2207 under suspension of council rules. Further discussion on suspension only? All those in favor of suspending the rules?
Aye.
Opposed, the rules have been suspended. Member Sands?
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 2207.
Second.
This ordinance allows the city to purchase 17 acres of land adjacent to Sells Park, a park that is at the end of Avon Place. This is some land that would be to the left of the pond up there, includes some rock formations that already get a lot of visits from people visiting the park, assuming that it's part of the city property already. It never has been. There have always been some disagreements about that. The family that owns this land, the Masters family, has agreed to sell these 17 acres to us. The purchase price is about $90,000. We have $70,500 from the state. There will be a 25% match from the city, which is about $23,500. These are purchase price plus the cost of installing a fence that was agreed upon by the city and the Masters family. And this is a very valuable addition to our park system.
Further discussion? Member Phillips?
Mr. President, I would just say that this is a beautiful area, and I'm really excited that we are adding this to our park system. I think a lot of citizens already think it's part of Sells Park, and it'll be really good to make that official.
Other comments? Member Patterson?
Just applauding the continuation of this program that's been going on for about five years now in terms of acquisitions of a, an area of green space added to our community. So, and this was a key part that we've been looking at for a long time and hoping for.
Other comments? Member Bishop?
Okay, and I'd just like to applaud that we're getting $70,000 grants to do this.
And are there other comments?
Mr. President, I just wanted to add that I don't see Mr. Nouse here, but I just want to compliment John Nouse for the work that he's done on this particular purchase and a lot of the land that has been purchased from Sells Park out towards Strouds Run. John has also organized volunteers to build trails and clear those parks, and he's going to be responsible for leading the group to build the fence around this 17 acres. Thank you, John.
All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 2207?
Aye.
Those opposed, the ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 2307, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a housing revolving loan fund administration agreement with the state of Ohio Department of Development. Member Sands?
Mr. President, this ordinance, as it says, authorizes the mayor to enter into agreement with the department, the Ohio Department of Development. We, this is a continuation of an agreement that we've had with the department. It will be for two more years through December 31, 2009. This is related to the Community Housing Improvement Program, which is administered for us by Tri-County Community Action Agency. And some of the activities that are funded by this CHIP fund involve some loans, people buying houses or refurbishing houses. Those funds can, when they are paid back, could go into a revolving loan fund that would benefit the city. So this allows us to take advantage of that if it were to happen. There are no funds in this program at the moment, but this allows us to be able to receive it.
Further discussion? Ordinance 2407, an ordinance authorizing the auditor of the city of Athens to make interfund transfers in the 2007 appropriation ordinance and declaring an emergency. Again, member Sands?
Mr. President, as we talked about in committee meetings, moving funds, moving money from one fund to another is an action that this council has to take. We have two of those moves that are recommended by the auditor's office. Money from funds from the Parking Garage Fund 730 moved to the Parking Garage Debt Fund 733. That amount is $166,250. As we discussed earlier, the Parking Garage Debt is approximately $300,000. This would pay off about $150,000 of that debt. The other is money from the TIF fund. The TIF is money that we're collecting from East State Street businesses through a tax incremental agreement. That money we're using now to pay off the East State Street Debt Fund. We're moving $300,000 between those two funds. This $300,000 is applied to a debt of approximately $2 million at this point.
Further comments? Ordinance 2507, an ordinance amending the 2007 appropriation ordinance, authorizing the payment of prior year expenses and declaring an emergency. Member Sands?
Mr. President, again, I'd like to move that we consider ordinance 2507 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
This ordinance is authorizing us to pay two prior year bills. Those are bills that we're paying for purchases made in calendar year 2006. Obviously, we want to be able to take care of that debt as quickly as possible.
Other comments? Motion and second to consider ordinance 2507 under suspension of council rules. All those in favor of suspending the rules?
Aye.
Opposed, the rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 2507.
Second.
This ordinance has two sections to it. Section one lists a lot of transfers from the general fund and other funds, a lot of appropriations, I'm sorry, a lot of amendments to the appropriations from these funds, ranging from $120 to $50,000 from the Transportation Fund. These add up to an expenditure total of about $67,445, which we're paying two previous year bills. One of those is to Leyd Law Transportation Company for $44,790. This is the company that administered our bus transportation system until December This is the company that administered our bus transportation system until December 31 of last year, and the Transportation Fund is transferring money to pay off this debt. And then we discussed the fact that council has approved, the administration has approved quite a while ago, that our, the city vehicles purchase their gas at Ohio University's filling station on, off a factory street. That allows us to take advantage of the purchase price and save money on gas purchases. At this moment, prior year bill is $22,655 to pay that bill. Section one lists the amounts for each department and the vehicles, the amount of gasoline that the vehicle has used. And then section two authorizes Service Safety Director to expend that money that we have transferred to the appropriate funds.
Member Wild?
I'm glad you mentioned the fact that we have these individually marked down through the vehicles and the departments. There's two things I wanted to bring up, one being, is that one of the reasons why we co-mingled with the university's gas stations, they got our tanks out of the well field, if I remember correctly.
There was, absolutely.
Okay. And the other thing, just to be absurd, is there's always the ethics and conflict of interest pouring to view of this, which I will bring up in marked absurdity. Thank you.
Just to further Mr. Wild's comments, Athens city trucks and vehicles used to be fueled on West State Street, and we had gas tanks there. Obviously, that is in the flood area, and so the city, in its efforts to protect our water system, has removed those tanks from that area.
Are there further comments on ordinance 2507? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Those opposed, the ordinance has been adopted. Resolution for second reading, R0107, a resolution accepting the Athens Park and Recreation 2007, 2011 Strategic Plan. Resolution 207, a resolution renaming Athens Parks and Recreation to Athens Community Arts and Recreation. Announcements and other business. Member Phillips?
I'll need a planning and development committee meeting next week to talk more about the summit at Coats Run and miscellaneous.
Communication committee to talk about telephone and computer networking networks. So that's going to be a report plus miscellaneous.
Environment committee. Try to get that, environment committee?
Yeah.
To work on maybe the report for the recycling, if we get time for it.
Other committees?
Arts and Recreation for the '07 Arts Market and miscellaneous.
And, Mr. President, if we want to continue the discussion regarding Students and Business Fair, we probably should have a committee meeting to do that. Time, obviously, we want to do this before spring quarter, before spring quarter ends, and surprisingly, time flies pretty quickly.
As it does. Are those all? Opportunity for, I'm sorry?
I'm not sure if Amy wanted a transportation committee or not.
She did. We will add up.
Okay.
Other? The next item on our agenda is an opportunity for citizens to speak on any legislative items or city services that we have not covered on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone that wishes to speak before council tonight? Seeing none and having addressed all items on our agenda, we stand adjourned.